Okay, today is Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. This is a work meeting for the Virgin Town Council. So, we're all here, alright? That's the call order, we're all here, let's go. Okay, some of the items on here are just gonna be, I'm just gonna be mentioning them, that's all. Just so that you know what's gonna be on the agenda on Tuesday. So, the very first thing we'll be doing on the agenda next Tuesday is the election canvas. And so, all we do at that point, I believe, is Crystal, do you read the results or do you?
Yes, no.
Yeah, so Crystal will read the election results and then we just vote for them. Are you gonna have words for us to say? You're gonna go, Karen?
Uh, it's uh, the code has changed a little bit this year, so we have a pretty little lengthy report that I've been working on all day today. Uh, I haven't got the results all finalized yet, depending how I am assuming I'll take that on Monday. And I'll put that in the report and then, um, I will read the report, you guys will all have visual, I don't have a book on my head. You will all have to sign the report and certify the report as well as myself and...
That's it?
Yeah, okay, I mentioned it. Um, one thing different about this year is usually in the square, if all of you remember, is I would give a certification. Do you guys remember that, the certification? This year, I have to have the certifications at the campus. So, the ones that you-
Even though we're not gonna do them until January?
Yeah, so the, so I, if you remember, I have two that you would have. The one that you would sign when you score in, that one will still do at the square. But the actual just certification one, you're certified on that one is-
Done at the campus.
Do with the campus now, so that one will be actual at the campus.
Okay.
Um, it's in the code, it's a brand issue requiring, so that one will have to be. If they're not here in the bind, we'll just have their certifications at the campus.
Okay, alright, so I just thought I'd let you guys know how this is gonna go. So, should you be prepared?
So, are we just doing that at the regular meeting then?
On Tuesday, okay. That would be done through, and that is the last day under state code to do the canvas. So, we're just lucky our town council doing this that day. Okay, otherwise we'd be having a special, uh, canvas. Alright, number two on the agenda, this is the, um, October minutes from last month. Last month, we, um, adopted the, I think there... Joint Agency Regional Water Conservation Plan, we had to have that voted on by October thirty-first. And then, at the Water Conservation District meeting, they told us that, that was right after that. They said they also have, that when they submit this to state, they have to have the minutes from all of the meetings where we approved it. So, you guys are gonna have to review the minutes and we'll, uh, approve them, gonna send to Jada, um, at the town council meeting next week. So, you're talking about, and that's all the minutes?
Ten, ten.
Oh, I'm sorry, I will only let the project come. But the minutes are here.
Ten twenty-one.
Yes.
Those are the most important ones.
Yes, those, those are the most important minutes, but they need to be, um, approved at the meeting next week. So, we can send them on to Water Conservation District. Okay? Next item on the agenda, I have a call for a development agreement, we still don't have the development agreement from Heath. I expect we will have it Tuesday. Uh, we had an email from their attorney, uh, asking if they could have it either tomorrow, Friday, or Monday. And so, um, I'm sure Heath will be showing up at that, um, uh-
Is it possible to tell Heath to get it done today or at least we can read it?
Well, of course, I can tell him that, but it's, you got- Yes.
Pretty cats that happens, but-
Exactly. Okay, so those three went very fast, okay?
I know, it was as fast as I can.
You're good, you're good. Okay, number four is closure of Pocketville Road. And so, I have the app on for us to talk about. And be aware that I'm now ready for us to move forward with doing the, uh, closure of Pocketville Road. Um, assuming that we're all in favor of that. Doing it, making it a cul-de-sac?
Well-
We'll discuss it, are we in favor of that? I am.
I, I need to know more. I mean, I mean, we're gonna close it, what? I'm not sure where everybody is, I know some people close it, some approve.
Other than us, like-
No, probably not.
Well, we know that, we had public hearings in the past, we had a whole town hall meeting about-
I thought we talked about it.
Not just a temporary letting, a temporary gate and then-
That's what the- The substation we had was that, because I, I think you and I brought it up.
Yeah.
And we were gonna close it, 'cause then you could, that electrical substation was gonna-
Was gonna-
...... And in the, it was the ideal time to close that. But it was gonna have a gate, 'cause you had to have a net and another-
If you're in emergency, yes.
Yeah, and you had to have it otherwise, so it was gonna have a gate, but it wasn't going to be a temporary gate.
Well, it would be a public gate, but all, a lot, uh, go, all the emergency services would have a way to open door.
And so, are we, when is this gonna be decided?
I don't know, it's on your nerves to discuss.
Oh, that's, okay, well, um, then I'm discussing it, so-
Okay, so just-
It's not like we're, we were gonna have-
It's not like we're gonna vote, say we're closing it.
We have to have, we have to have, there's-
Oh, yeah, okay, so we're gonna cover it from-
Not even be said, we're not gonna count those as they here.
Well, that's what I want to make sure.
By law, they, they, they're all probably-
Sorry, I answered your question, Murtagh, I stand, I wanna hear the public before I make a decision to that.
Well, okay, well, your question was, as a town council, are we wanting to have something?
Yeah, we're-
Public hearing, yes. Yes, so, yeah. I know where the public stands, 'cause we already had a public hearing three years ago on this topic, and we had B side people there.
Which is ninety percent of the people that are for it are on that road.
Yes, the people that are against it don't live there.
Don't live there, that's kind of the way, but it is, it is an old road, it is a road that is used in this community, it's a hot topic. It's a hot topic, it's a very hot topic. It is, there are a lot of people that do not want it, but-
Well, you used to be able to smoke on airplanes too.
It's real, but they might, they might, uh, solution, and if they can, whatever.
But at this point, it's- It's, it's the, the complaints that were received three years ago were, I'm always driven this.
And originally from people that were not even in Virgin, uh-
Some were not in Virgin, but people in Virgin, like, well, I'm always driven that way.
Yeah.
They just don't want change, there's an adequate, uh, alternative way.
Yes, there is a nicer, oh-
Yeah, probably safer.
And it's quicker and quicker.
It's quicker, yes.
But maybe we need to commit people.
But I wanna take of what you're, we've got that subdivision that's going in there that's, that's gonna be short-term rental. I think ten homes, so what traffic, how is that traffic gonna be affected? Because are we gonna-
They're totally not gonna be able to go up Pocketville Road and get their water in the throes.
But they're gonna be out, going out, calling it anyway, getting everything back through.
I'm worried about that.
Instead of going out Pocketville Road, so one of alternatives that I think we had discussed is maybe having it... See, that one won't either, out or in, but I'm not sure-
Well, Gary Ferris had, so we discussed this three years ago. There's a camera-
I can't remember two years ago.
We had a public hearing on this topic three years ago, people were going the road, maybe they got the yeses and they got the nos. And Cameron proposed that because there's a road going into that subdivision and it goes up to the top of that hill, just have the road continue down next to the landfill and it's right there with that road that's, that comes out by the landfill.
They were, that was the second egress that they needed.
That they needed.
They can come in on Pocketville Road, but they also can come in, they can make their main entrance through from, uh, out on Co-Loa Terrace.
So, when you turn, so when you turn to go into the landfill, you turn, and then we turn like that to the landfill? You can see there's a road that just goes like that.
There was us and another landlord that would have to agree to the, I think it's the landlord that sold the land in the first place, that would have to agree to that road.
'Cause they still-
It's not as water, it's not as far around. So, we would have to agree to it and the other landlord, but I think it was the landlord that owned the property in port.
And, and-
And the water conservatory is good.
And that's not part of that, uh, into that subdivision.
You know, it opened another part. But they have a road that goes and stops.
Yeah, it just hit right there.
And you just-
Yeah, so one of the considerations, because I don't know if the neighbors realize that they have a short-term rental subdivision that's gonna increase some of the traffic going up and down Pocketville Road, whether that's gonna change their decision, I don't think it will. But it's something I don't wanna make a decision lightly without knowing, thinking about what the effects of that subdivision is gonna do on the neighborhood.
What if we did, and I, I'm, I'm, I see where you're coming from, I'm thinking of adding to it. What if we did a, uh, this is gonna happen after me, I'm sure, because that's next month, but... Why don't we, we make a draw, like a mock drawing of what's gonna happen, what we're thinking, and we're gonna let people go on it. Let them come and talk to us about it, let them tell us what's going on.
Yeah.
Or like, put the subdivision in there and say, this is, this, this subdivision has this potential because it's been done for it. And then show, this is one way, this is one way, and say, like we did with the general plan. And that, that's where we came up with most of this discussion, was at, not the general plan, was it the general plan?
That where we talked about-
We had a whole meeting, I was sitting in the back, uh, on the floor.
Well, we did have, three, three and a half years ago, we had a town hall thing where I had tables and there was, um, drawings, uh, we had a, we had a picture in the back of Pocketville Road.
Yeah.
And people had pens and they sat around, drew on it, and I, I got everything saved from that.
I asked the public for, on that specifically, 'cause I remember the poking, you have people that were sitting there going, if you don't want it, you need to get there and say that right now.
Sure.
So, we had it, but what if we did that, where, okay?
I think the more information the public prepare.
Well, I say, every single piece of paper from the town hall we have, I've got it all saved and put away so that we can bring it back out, so that we already did this, here's what I have sent you, that lives on Pocketville, or affected by Pocketville.
Well, I don't know if everybody that saw Pocketville Road was at that meeting.
No, not at town hall, well, yeah.
They were all at town, and there was, we got some new neighbors, so-
The thing about that road is it does affect more than just our town hall, it's other people use it from other towns.
Yeah.
And it's like a, it's, it's like a traditional, and it's part of something that's been part of, that's what your struggle is, that's what's gonna be the big challenge. And it's not, it's not, I mean, if the people on Pocketville Road are in favor of it, the next challenge you're gonna have is that this is the way the road has always been, right? This is the road we have always used, we don't wanna just end a road. But if the cul-de-sac we put in, and I think this is my, where April, is kind of like the temporary, when we talked about the cul-de-sac, it wasn't a full cul-de-sac. It was like a turnaround cul-de-sac, 'cause we discussed bus, we discussed, um, the substation. Was there is, there's a bus, is there a bus that goes up there?
There's a bus.
Then there was something, there was a reason we were talking, oh, the trash. We were talking about being able to turn around in that cul-de-sac, but not making it a fully paved cul-de-sac.
Okay.
That was the idea.
Well, in any event, it's gonna have a gate for emergency purposes, because we have had traffic, we've had to route up Co-Loa Terrace Road and then come back down Pocketville Road, and there was that wreck. Uh, when there's design half marathon, the buses come from, uh, Springdale with all the people from the hotel, and they turn on Pocketville Road, on Co-Loa Terrace Road, they drop everybody, and they go up and around and come down Pocketville Road and then go back to pick up the next load of people that's from there. And they just do this over and over, generally get on-
That might have been the case, probably.
So, those are the two times, that's why I thought we were talking about, with somebody who uses, who uses it for like Red Bull and things like that. So, it has to have a, a, a gate that can open, so it's not a permanent, it's not that no one will ever be able to go through that gate and go through that road again, it's just gonna be an urgency.
So, are we gonna have that, this hearing in December?
Probably, February maybe.
Okay, I was gonna suggest, probably should wait till the new councils.
That would be February or something, we gotta start the process sometime.
No, that's fine, we just need to, we just ask any questions.
Guys are not, I don't-
And I, I feel like people, humans do not like change.
They don't, they just don't.
And they, the idea of anything changing is just-
Drive it pretty good.
But once it happens, then you get used to it, or it's fine.
Yes.
It's your nature.
I've got some that they decided wanna see, well, and you would be most sure.
Yes, you're, you're just as, as bad as the others.
Yes, that's true.
Getting worse there.
So, yeah. Okay, so, any objection to moving forward on that?
No.
Okay. And what, what is, um, everyone's thoughts on this? I know you said you wanna hear more, and hear a public comment, but we've been through that before, and I don't think we're gonna have any public comment that's any different from what we had three years ago. But we'll do it in a public hearing, of course, and we'll, we'll go through the process. But I think the change, I, I think the, the what we're gonna hear from people is exactly what we heard three years ago.
Here we're gonna see, I, I don't remember exactly what that was, my sense was is that most people favored the closure. But there were some concerns, and I don't remember what those concerns, details of those concerns were.
Okay.
I feel like if we go back, we can look at the minutes from that meeting.
Can we wait, the comments from people on Pocketville Road is having more, more weight to them than someone who lives south of it?
We just do that naturally.
Like, but the problem with saying that is that, yeah, there, it's a public road, it's everywhere, it's-
I understand.
That's the problem with saying it that way, is-
So, when you say it, you just say, if the majority of the comment came from Pocketville residents, the people are mostly affected. Okay, alright, so we'll move forward with that, we, you know, we'll do the public hearing sometime this spring, either late winter or early spring.
January or September, who's good.
Okay, alright. Okay, alright, next thing on the agenda, I have, uh, planning commission ordinance. And what I did is, I have not drafted any ordinance, what I've done is I pulled out the, um, language, this is in SharePoint, and I think it just says Planning Commission Document or something like that, um, in your SharePoint folder?
Changes, it's, uh-
Okay, changes. So, if you open that up and look at it, I just pulled out the section of chapter four and, uh, sixteen point four point O two. And all I did is I deleted two sentences. I see no reason why now that we have a director of community development who has planning commissions in town council meetings, why do we need a liaison from town council planning commission? In the past, we did not need that because we did not know what was going on in planning commission, but right now, I have a director of planning of community development who will be telling us. And we have to, that's what we-
And we also have a chair of the planning commission, uh, we have to push her away from being-
I understand, the liaison also-
We don't need a layoff.
We don't need a liaison, so I wanted to do that. And then the only other thing is, I wanted to add, again, under the rules of procedure, that the town council will approve, 'cause before, um, a year ago, actually more than a year ago, I had proposed that the town council, um, writing the laws and regulations governing the meetings, uh, planning commission meetings, and we got terrible pushback from everybody in planning commission, but I at least want us to approve them. We don't have to write them, but we can approve, we should approve them. And that is, uh, consistent with the state law, in my opinion. And if you want, I'll pull up the state law and I'll approve it. 'Cause the state law says that the ordinance for creating the planning commission has, uh, six or seven items that are supposed to be in the ordinance, and one of those is, um, the rules, regulations for their meetings. And it's always says, all the, the, the town will then, planning commission will write their own rules for having them on the meetings. And that's how they took care of that. But the state law says the rules, regulations for, uh, having them in the ordinance that created the planning commission. And we put everything in except that. However long ago, I mean, this could have been forty years ago when they created the planning commission, I don't remember what that was. But the original ordinance, um, covered everything except that one, one, um, thing, that one fact, or, oh.
I, I would assume that as a body out here, we look at the rules and procedures, unless there's something that is out of language.
Well, I'm not saying they're gonna be right.
Right, no, we, we're probably just-
Approve them.
Approve, yeah.
Unless there's something, as Mark said, when we were, Mark and I were talking about this the other day, that there may be something in there that we say, no, we really need to do it this way.
Yeah.
Or something like that, so there, I just want us to approve that, that's me.
Is it?
Is there a requirement?
Yeah, well, exactly. But I'm, I'm not saying they're right, I just want us to approve. So, I have not drafted that actual ordinance, I just showed you guys, I just wrote down the things I wanted to change, and then we'll come up with an ordinance and the whereas is, et cetera, et cetera, okay? So, those, just getting rid of the liaison and saying town council will approve, that's what I'm changing for their fact. Okay, the next is this chapter eight ordinance, I think what I called it on this, um, agenda here. But this is an ordinance that we had, had before us once before, and we decided to put it off. And so, I've been pushed to please bring this back up for a vote, would we please vote on this? So, I've written it back up on putting it on our agenda for us to look at. Um, this has several different things that was being changed. There was, um, adopting the two-family homes, or two flex, if you wanna call it that. Exclusions to height limitations, water and sewer requirements, and then land suitability. So, there were four, uh, five, five sections, five things that were being amended on chapter eight in this, uh, ordinance. So, um, yeah, five things. But yes, this is from the old way, and I will have, I will have the, we draft this in the new way. We, we just will, or, or I will, so that it's not the old way. So, I'm not saying we need to talk about this tonight, I'm saying we're gonna put it on our agenda and we're gonna start looking at it.
So, were there two of them?
Two different. Well, we did have a word up from Cameron, are you asking the one we had last month from Cameron?
Right.
We put that off until December.
Until, uh, we put it off until December.
Right.
My thought was, we would not address, we'll address this at the same time we're looking at this.
Okay.
So, we need to look at this one.
Well, we still have this references, uh, and I assume Lee wants this passed. Uh, but my question is, this references, uh, village overlay zone, which we don't have yet.
There's, oh, there it is.
And we probably won't have that till January of the year.
So, well, okay, so we'll talk about that, that maybe those go both get voted on at the same time. Or me wanting to, and then the next one, and that, since this refers to a zone that we don't have yet. 'Cause I see it does say, a two-family building in a village overlay area.
So, I'm-
Is subject to-
Well, so, so the first thing that comes to mind, if you have this in, that, that you pass it, but then what happens if you don't pass the village?
Well, we don't have to pass this, this is on our agenda for us to talk about.
Okay.
I'm not putting it on for a vote till we decide we're ready to vote on it. Okay, that's, I am, I'm ready, yeah, carefully. You know how I am about things that I want us to talk about these. I want us to review and talk about, maybe, the damages. So, this is back on the agenda. And I do have one thing I want to talk about that is not on the agenda, but I forgot it while I'm sitting here. And that is the other ordinance that both Darlene and Lee keep asking, when will we get a vote on it? When will we get a vote on it, when will we win the few votes? That is an ordinance that, um, a very, very short ordinance, and all it did was go to all the residential zones and, and, or each of the uses, each of the zones and uses, and said, um, uses not listed or hereby prohibited. And so, they want to add that to the different, all the, all the zones. And now have this new, uh, code section the state just passed, it became effective within the day. And I'm not sure if this, um, and I'll give you the code section, so if I can look it up, it's ten dash twenty dash five oh seven. And it is ordering, each municipality shall incorporate into the municipality's land use ordinances a process for removing and approving a new or unlisted business use and designating an appropriate zone or zones for this use. And then they just go on to describe what the process shall entail. And so, and this is called a classification request.
Right.
And so, I'm not sure that putting in the language of some uses not listed or hereby prohibited, if we now have to put this in our code, which tells people how to bring forward a new or unlisted business use for consideration. And then it does go on to say that this, whether or not this use shall be determined, uh, we designate a land use authority who will decide whether or not, um, this proposed use aligns with an already existing use. And then it goes on to say, it goes to the legislative body that needs this.
Yeah.
So, the town council will be the deciding on this.
Yeah, you know, that's, I know that a lot, I don't, we did it in Michigan, but some states, what you do is, when you have a use that's not listed, they look to see if it's similar to that use. And sometimes it's planning, it's only board that make it a decision, sometimes it's the legislature, a board that makes a decision, sometimes it's just, it's solely director that will make the decision on that. Uh, and it varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Have, not having read this, but it just glancing through it quickly, that's what this appears to be.
Yes, I agree.
Except, it appears to be that for business uses, uh, I don't know if, if we need something different for residential uses. I can't think of anything right off the top of my head, why you would need-
This just refers to business, yeah, but this, something talks about business.
But I don't know why you would need it for residential, because usually in residential, you're just talking residential buildings, so-
Okay, so we, so my question is, this ordinance that we have not yet passed at the town council, which came from planning commission, about putting in the language saying uses not listed or hereby prohibited, we could potentially put that in all of the residential zones. But I don't think based on this that we could put that in the commercial zone.
I, I, I don't, I don't read this, so I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, it's, I see, shall men or-
So-
Yeah, you may be, but I don't, this, this may have preempted that.
And that's what I'm concerned, that's this meeting was talking about something like that.
People watching.
He's-
Yeah.
He had mentioned that he didn't, you know, that he'd be able-
Yeah, kids were facing that on, on case law.
Yeah.
Uh, and this appears maybe to go in and, you know, call, try to qualify that concern.
Exactly, that's how I, that's what I considered this to be the codification of that, that Supreme Court case, that Utah Supreme Court case.
Well, you know this.
So, um, I can, I will put that on, I guess, maybe December's, uh, agenda. First to look at that particular ordinance, I just wanted to bring it up so that we could be looking at this. Ten twenty-five oh seven, and how is that going to, how do those two together, what, how do we work?
Yeah, we should probably ask Keith, if this is what, if that's what, uh, I mean, Paul was doing.
Okay.
At least with respect to the commercial.
Okay, yes, at least with respect to commercial.
Yeah.
Or high-end highway resorts, and so it's hard to, it's a place for businesses, so. Okay, alright. And so, with this, 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 uh, new law, and I still haven't gone through the whole bill, the bill, uh, that, they changed our numbering system for the land use code in the state law. And it was ten dash nine A dash whatever.
Right. Right.
And they numbered it, and if you go to the index now in title ten, there is no, how that, you know, it's showing here, nine A, it wasn't here earlier. Oh, that's showing up again. Maybe they wouldn't have missed that.
Do, do you know if the league has any input on this?
No, they never mentioned it. It's never come up at any of the meetings that I attend, and I tend them online, they're like every other Monday. Chapter nine A has disappeared, and now here it is, it's here again. Oh, it just.
So it's pretty number.
Yeah, there's nothing here, okay. The number is there, but there's nothing there. Okay. And then, by the way, this new chapter twenty-one, this is here, so the land use code was ten dash nine A, it's now ten dash twenty, and there is a chapter twenty-one called municipalities and housing supply. And it does say in twenty that we cannot uh, uh, violate chapter twenty-one, this municipalities and housing supply, so if any further uh, land use that has anything to do with housing, we're gonna have to read chapter twenty-one and put them together. Because it says here, because they, they added twenty and twenty-one, and twenty-one is a brand-new uh, chapter. And so any land use that deals with housing, it's gonna have to, we'll have to check twenty-one and make sure we don't, we don't violate that. So, the future.
Right.
Okay.
If we look at this, this, this may solve some of the concerns that we usually have, which, well, we have that issue with, perhaps we didn't want detail, but the whole issue of whether um, right, the short-term rental, so on, by the gas station, they have the definition at, at that time as to, to uh, housing units and dwellings and so on, because we would have used this procedure to make that determination. Remember that dispute over the gas station and the cabins?
The only thing, you mean, because they were calling them cabins?
They were calling them cabins.
As opposed to, um, and I, I thought that was rather splitting hairs, I mean, as short-term rental, it.
Well, short-term rental, it was only hotels and hotels.
No, they, no, they, they came in and got their, they came in and applied, got their building permit when, before we ever removed the short-term rentals in commercial. They came in and got their building permit before that. It was all my little postcard, I think.
Yeah, but I don't know if short-term rentals were listed as, as a, on top of the use.
It's a permitted use of the commercial, it's a ten per commercial. And we removed it in February, and they came in December and got it.
Yeah, there, there was a building, but, but I, what I'm saying is, is that may have solved the dispute that we have.
Oh, at that time, yes, at the time, that would have.
Because then they could have used this procedure, I was giving away.
Yeah, 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 sorry, I misunderstood your answer, yes, that, this would have.
Because then it would have came to the lunch party, and they would have sent you eight of them there.
Yes, exactly. Is there any expiration date on their, on the living permit? No, they came in, and, we already went through this with, with heat.
Mm-hmm.
Because we, we were trying to argue that their building permit had expired, and they have done some work. They laid that infrastructure, yes, yeah, so, they've done stuff.
We've done this for so long, for, there'd be so many months.
Yeah, they have to remove their. They have to do something, and they can get a, so that they can say, we're doing something. Okay, so I just want to bring that up so everybody's aware.
Alright, thanks, I'm gonna have to read this more closely.
Well, the bill itself is four hundred and fifty pages, and so I, I need to look at some, what else is new that we didn't know was in there.
And so, the legislation here, the legislature.
Okay, now we have three resolutions to talk about. The first two are gonna be really simple, and then the only other one that's gonna have to have discussion is number nine. Okay, so this next one, which, uh, Crystal has read, read numbered twenty-twenty-five dash L, is a, we have to, by the end of this year, we have to appoint a chief administrative officer to comply with the government data privacy act. And, uh, yeah. And so they had a couple, they had, I think there was a workshop on this, at the ULCT conference, but I didn't go to it. Um, I let somebody else go. So this is designating the town manager as our chief administrative officer under this government data privacy act. Is there anything else you'd like to say about this, Mark? You're the one who, who drafted the, this resolution, anything we need to know beyond what I've said?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Well, I don't want to take authorship away from Crystal, because Crystal actually drafted it, so I'll give her that credit, but, um, as the mayor said, um, there was a seminar at the league, which I attended, and then Region Five, they're really helpful with this state mandate and providing uh, for the next steps. So this is the first step in the process, and then there are a number of policies that need to be adopted, but Region Five has model policies. And so, um, but essentially it's a program that requires local governments to have policies, practices, and procedures for processing personal data. And we have to record uh, plans in the state in, in the near future. And we also have to, for example, provide, we, a process where uh, anyone that has personal data on, in our files can correct or uh, change them, and there's a number of different steps, but fortunately, there's not one due date for everything. This is the first due date, and then there's some that will follow.
So were we talking about, like, private information that they have on a guilty permit application? What kind of parts, what kind of private data?
Oh, not her address. That type of information, we have to um, have a policy about, you know, keeping it confidential to the extent possible, and if we share it or sell it, which of course, we don't do unless it's a public document, we have to have a procedure, written procedures in place.
I don't think, almost, almost like the federal privacy law.
It's, it's, I, I think it's a privacy act that has applied to private business that's now being applied to our military.
Yeah, when you're in the military or the federal government, every time you sign something, they have a privacy act statement on there, the best, about release and so on, so.
Right.
Sounds like this is similar.
So this, this, I like this, because when we were, when I was working with Crystal, sometimes we were required to post the applications that people were doing, and we, I started rejecting them, because you're not supposed to post any of their private information, you should never find out. Do you're saying that the problem is that in a building permit, we should know who.
Who was supplied for building them.
Right, but.
Their phone number.
A council can know, but not public. It's a protection for public, we're not supposed to share that information.
Well, but the name, are they, are they even in the use, the name, or just uh, uh, data, along with the name, my phone number matters?
Well, this, we have to adopt a policy.
Okay.
That determines.
Yeah.
What, what has to be kept under the act, and what is considered a public document, and something that we have.
They give you a face, right, like a chase?
Yeah.
And then you have to build from there. Right?
That's the way it would have been.
Okay.
So there, there will be more to come, so the first step, but fortunately, uh, because it was gonna be some work involved, unfortunately, there's this, there's some graduated steps uh, until total compliance, uh, which is January one, one twenty-seven, so.
So I'll next year finish the rest of it, okay, so we'll vote on that, uh, Tuesday. Okay, the next uh, resolution is the one that Paul and April asked more about, uh, the pedestrian trail. Pedestrian, we've been talking there, it's not pedestrian, it's pedestrian. Okay?
That'll, that'll take. I can get it for a second, right, because, because this is my.
Okay, so go ahead and tell us about this one. Mark?
Well, um, so this, again, as you say, the mayor, it was um, requested by council members, Lou and Barry, and so I did a very rough draft, and I requested then that council member, uh, would be um, flesh it out a bit, because he knew what he wanted, he had some good information, and so that's what we have for you tonight.
I think that, because I found out Thursday last week, so a week ago, that uh, Greater Zion got the funding to do those underpasses, those three underpasses. So we might want to put in here too about that, because you mentioned the funding to uh, improve the road, the paving, uh, the Sheepbridge Road, but we might want to mention that there's gonna be these pedestrian uh, underpasses.
Really?
And there's three of them, and they got the funding, for, no, I just found out, but I don't believe that was a funding, we'll get a call and find out.
Yeah.
And uh, uh, I think maybe that would add to this, about the trail if you want.
And I just recently heard that Governor Cox is really adamant about all these trails in Utah.
Oh, did you attend that Utah Trail Network?
It's not, well, I didn't, I couldn't go to the uh, Tuesday one, but I'm going to, or.
Next week?
The, the one next week.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, it just makes sense, why, why wait on that, I mean, that they're putting all this money in the trails, it's gonna be like a, a no way.
I agree, what, what all that guy was saying, who was here doing the presentation, is that the funding they got from the federal government was to pay the rent. And therefore, they have to use the money to pay the rent. And the, because of the restrictions on federal funds and what it's spent for. And he was saying, they'll, they want to do a trail, but the funds that they got are not for a trail. They may have to use it to a restaurant at the same time, get the money. They could use it for a pedestrian, either, that's why they had to apply separately for that.
But, but they could find that it still exists.
Oh, sure, sure.
But uh, the one thing I mentioned, did Mark when I came in, let's see if the council's open to the, instead of just having our names being approved, that we all sign it, because we all have signatures on the resolution, and they carry more visual weight that were behind them.
And, and Crystal's.
That's my suggestion.
Crystal says.
It's on our, on checkpoint.
Okay, yeah, good, I'm happy. Okay, so we will vote on that one, uh, Tuesday, and then uh, we can all hang out after the meeting, because we're gonna have to all sign the um, canvas results, or can all sign that resolution, and whatever else Crystal needs us to sign from that meeting. I don't know if there's something else we have to sign from the um, election canvas. Okay, so the last.
I thought you needed to bring Jim out for that?
Um. No, if they wanna, if, they wanna come and, I'll, I'll put an email out, if they wanna come and accept their certificate, they can, if not, it's not a big deal, but.
They can just come by and pick it up.
Yeah, they can come by and pick it up, I just, I haven't have them, they have, they want to accept their certificate, they can.
But the exceptions of the results are just from the town council.
Yeah.
It's signed.
Yeah, it's, it's certifying the election.
Okay, so this last uh, resolution is uh, I am proposing, and Mark and I have talked about this, that we uh, do a complete revision of the town code, and this is not just the land use code, it's the whole code. Uh, we have all sorts of gaps, once we, when we went to this new uh, when we upgraded our code, the municipal code, to this new way it looks online, it became clear in the municipal code section, not the land use, but everything else, how much we're missing. And if you go compare to what the other towns have in the municipal code, like, for example, we still, to this day, do not have a code about penalties. And we need a code about penalties.
We said.
Oh, and, right, and it's still not, it's still never happened. And there's um, we need to upgrade our fee schedule, we need, we need, there's all sorts of things that we need to do that we would have ordinances or resolutions done in order to fit them in the code. And if we do it this way, where we uh, hire someone basically to redo the code for us, they'll take care of everything in there, we just have one adoption of the whole code. It'll probably take about a year, from when I've talked to, we talked to Sunrise, when we had a meeting with Sunrise last week, and this paid off, because Riker's working on ten ordinances right now for the town, and then planning commission has others, so, with, that's, there's so many ordinances, just constantly, 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 public hearings, uh, adopting ordinance, sending off the code, giving the code to update, just constant. And we could just take care of this in one fell swoop with uh, a complete revision of the code.
Would this um, take care of, so, we'll do ordinances, and it's referring to different chapters, et cetera, et cetera, and that doesn't get cleaned up? So would that take care of that as well?
Yes.
That would take care of that. And the other thing, like, for example, in the, a couple months ago, we removed the complaint procedure for the land use code, because it really didn't need to go with the land use code, but we have to come up with a new complaint procedure to put in the, um, outside of the land use code. And so, we've got, there's so many holes in our code that have nothing to do with land use. And so, I am proposing that we um, have a specialist that will um, help us with this, so.
How much or something like that?
Well, I told Paul, Paul asked me that, I think I have that answer for today, and I'm gonna set it forward, but I have not gotten the answer. So hopefully I'll have an answer for Tuesday.
How much will, how much will it cost? Uh, what, what your, well, well, our budget's supported at this time? We're doing way till next year budget?
We.
Those are the two questions.
Okay, well, I will say yes, that the tax revenue reports, when we did our budget for this year, we had increased our revenue by ten percent for each little, each, each source of revenue. Um, Kansas has said, let's just uh, increase by ten percent. And so far, the month of August was bad, but the month of August is bad every year, because it's so hot, and there's so less tourists coming, but um, so far, we've been way above the ten percent in our revenue that we've gotten, so we're doing good.
That, that, it's probably a good idea that we have somebody do the compilation, it's just a matter of of whether we do it this year or next year.
Yeah.
On the budget, and, and I do want to.
And it all depends on what it's gonna cost.
What it's gonna, what it's gonna cost, obviously, and then you said something that I don't think will be part of that, because you said we're out of date on our fee schedule. They won't redo the fee schedule, they'll just add the fee schedule to it, and then we'll have to update it ourselves through separate ordinance. They, they can't, they can't pass a legislation.
No.
Okay.
No, but the word, but this, this, the way they do this is, they come back when they're drafted, um, well, yes, the fee schedule has to be adopted by separate resolution, because it's this, it's about money.
Okay, and I, I want to, this year, I was just trying to hear what you said, and most of the red flags that I covered, you would speak.
But the main thing, the way it works, is they will work with the town on what it is that we're looking for, and then they come up with their draft, and it comes to the park that has nothing to do with land use will come to the town code, the park that has to do with land use will go to the planning commission, we will vote public hearing and some stuff, and then it comes to us.
And I assume that they'll, they'll say, we recommend that you need to consider following all of this.
Well, then we have public hearing, and then we have to, because there's a whole code section here, because I've referred here to ten dash three dash seven oh seven, that empowers municipalities to revise, codify, and compile ordinances. Um, there's like, there's seven oh six, seven oh seven, some of the ways, some of the non, they, they explain the whole process.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I, overall, I think.
Because if you've probably done this before in Montana.
Yeah.
Okay, so what would you like to add to this, um, Mark?
Well, thank you, Mayor, uh, council members, I, I think, I mean, there, there are a lot of spinning plates, shows, say, in terms of ordinances, and I think um, and, and that's not a negative comment, because they're all forward. and, and that's not a negative comment, because they're all forward looking, and those are all being done for a reason, but as you said, Valerie, you know, when you amend an ordinance, it can affect a number of different ordinances, and if you don't cover all your bases, you create conflicts and you have problems. So I think it makes sense. I've been through the process, it's been a while, about ten years ago, and through a complete qualification. I almost hate to, the question about cost, of course, is, is very relevant and budget. My recollection was, it was about ten, fifteen thousand dollars, but I hate to, I hate to throw that out there, because ten years ago, lots changed since then. So it may be more, but when you look at it in the context, there's some other things, like cost is
That's costing us like sixty dollars, yeah?
Yes, which, which, yeah, I don't think you're looking at that.
Oh, okay. I thought you wouldn't be looking at that.
I, municipal code gave us a quote to do it.
What started with that? But we're, but what we're asking is not just going through and looking for those differences.
Yeah.
But it's a legal, it's a complete, it's like, what do you want chapter sixteen to say and nail right there? What do you want this chapter? How do you want to revise this chapter? How do you want to revise that chapter? And it's going to be
That they call the legal review or something, it's what municipal, municipal called it.
One of them, yeah.
Several years ago.
Because they, and I think it was, I think you were pretty accurate, it was not until
How long ago was that?
Yes. Oh, it was before I became mayor, so this
Yeah, so
Probably around eight years ago.
Yeah.
So I was, I was still with you. So what are the other things? I'm glad to hear that you're, you're okay with this. It's just, what, what do we put in the budget?
Yeah, when we put it in the budget, what else does it get?
Would they work with, like, would they work with somebody on the council?
Oh, they, they told us, they told us that, so we were just talking with Sunrise, because we were in a meeting with Sunrise, and we got to the topic of Riker and the ten ordinances he's working on. And that's when I said, I really would be willing to do something like this, instead of having all this constant, constant, constant. And that's how this all came up. As soon as I said, oh, we've done that for, for other towns, done a revital.
Did they say what town?
The, the most recent one they did was Porterville. Did they say any others? No, they just said this is the most recent.
And so who's going to do this?
We haven't decided yet.
All, all time.
You're, you're, you're going to hear, right here, this is, this authorizes the ma, the mayor to appoint with the advice and consent of the governing body, a person or entity to do this for.
So, so when this, when do we do that, if I say it's sent?
When I come back and say I want to use A B C engineering to do this, then you guys, and so the question is, do I go get three bids from Yeah, and, and then I come back and say, here's the one I want to use, or we get broad input, but whatever.
So this may not be our next piece.
Well, this, there is nothing that stops us from doing all this, go ahead and say. This, I'm not determining who it is. This just says, the mayor is authorized to. And then I have to come back to you guys, and if you guys want me to get
Does the statute already do that?
No. This just says the mayor is authorized.
No, I know the resolution does, but aren't we just repeating what the statute already gives authorization for? As I recommend.
This is work for work, what the office, what the chap, what the council says.
Yeah, so why do we, no, I'm not, that's fine, why do
You think we don't have to do it?
They don't have to do this resolution. You can go ahead and, and find somebody and bring it back to us.
And then do the resolution.
And then do the resolution.
Do a resolution.
Yeah, we will have to do the resolution. It seems like we're doing two resolutions.
For the same thing.
For the same thing.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're authorizing you to do this, and if you want that, I don't have a problem with it.
Oh, thanks. So my question was, would So if we get, if I hire this person or whoever, whoever we choose, so is there somebody in the town that's going to work with us? What they said, what they told us, when we talked to them, is we appoint a steering committee.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and they'll work that.
So that would probably be
And they told us what to look for and be, it would be the town manager, be the mayor. It would be a couple of town residents, maybe a business owner, because you want the business owners input. So they just said you, there's a steering committee, you work with a committee.
Okay.
And so, and, but I suspect, and I can ask any further, but I suspect that they kind of have to be with people and like planning committee or whatever. I'm sure they do that, but what are you guys talking about?
Now I see why you're going to have the resolution, because statute says may authorize and direct the mayor to appoint.
With, with advising.
Yeah, I can see why you put the resolution on that.
Yeah, because I was like, we can do this resolution and I have to that later with, say, here's the, here's the people. You guys okay with this?
Yes. Oh, that's, you talk over?
Yeah.
Okay, what were you guys laughing about over there? What did I do?
Probably what I did.
Okay. This is like, this is like second grade.
You guys just know you're talking. What, and look at the
To make sure that we were looking at the right
Correct code, okay.
It was business related.
Okay. This is completely different than what, like, municipal, and I can't remember the name of the other company that go ahead and have, they don't, they're not the same, they against each other. That we went from municipal, because they were so much cheaper, but they both offer the same things, and the other company also offered to do a legal qualification.
Okay.
This, this is
Is this whole different?
This is not different.
Because when this is done, once they come up with the final code and we, and the town council votes to adopt it, then we take it and we send it to municipal, so that municipal can upload everything onto their site.
Do they turn, will the, the additional paper?
Out of that?
When municipal plan act, there probably is, because it would be a big job.
Yeah. It certainly won't be ten thousand dollars, but it would be a big job with it just also sent them in a work document or document. I would hope not, because we're, we're, they're not, all they're doing, they've already done numbering, they've done all of that, we paged in right out of last year. And to redo everything, upgrade our, upgrade the level of service that we have with them, and they, and all of this. So all of that's already done. All we're doing is changing the words. And so that goes to them as in a work document, they upload it. So anything else? Oh, I, I know, there's one other thing I wanted to say about I was really in favor of this too, is, you know, we have the, the state has pending ordinance legislation, and when you have pending ordinance, how nobody can come in and apply for, to do something that we, that we But if we have, say, fifteen ordinances that are going on and fifteen pending ordinances, people are stuck. And I just think it's wrong to have that many pending ordinances constantly. And I'm afraid that, because we've had things happen in the state legislature as a response to something that happened in Virgin. It's, it has happened before. And, and, for example, there's also this new code that was in, I was talking to Pam, the mayor of Rockville, a couple days ago. Because there's a code in there, new, new ordinance. You can't regulate open houses, and that's specifically for something that happened in Rockville. That, 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 that legislation was proposed by a legislator, the legislator
And he had known what happened.
In Rockville, and there was an issue, and he proposed this legislation, it's all, it's all
Stuff that the state
and response to something that happened in Virgin, and so I'm concerned
That's our state law to say.
Yeah, and so I'm concerned if we have too many pending legis, too many pending ordinances that keep people from being able, from being able to this and this and this and this. That the next thing you know, the state's going to get rid of that pending ordinance legislation, and I like that pending ordinance.
But how does this qualification affect the pending ordinance issues? I just don't
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, we don't do this. If we do not do this, and we have ten to fifteen ordinances underway all the time, every month, because we didn't do this global reset, then I'm just saying, I don't like the way we're doing things now. I want to do it this
No, I don't have a problem with doing the global reset, I just can't get my head around how that affects pending ordinance.
You're, you're Doing a global reset does not have anything to do with pending ordinance. The pending ordinance, what I'm afraid of is that we do not do the global reset. And then it's ordinance after ordinance after ordinance, public hearing after public hearing after public hearing, planning and it just has so many pending ordinances that it looks bad. And doing a global reset looks good. That's all I'm saying. If the state comes in and says you're using
Says legislation.
Yeah, too many pending ordinances, we're going to get rid of that.
No, no, I understand that argument. I just haven't made the leap to, and it does
We'll talk about it outside.
But I, I think we do the global reset, that's not affecting current pending ordinance, future pending ordinance. So you still have the same issue. You've got ten pending ordinances, city of, town of Virgin, we're going to get rid of it. It doesn't matter whether we do the global reset or not. I don't see how that affects pending ordinance.
I'll explain it later, because you're, you're getting confused with what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I definitely understand what you're saying, it's just not making sense.
Okay, it's not making sense to you, but it totally makes sense to me. I'll get you to understand.
Yeah, but I'm all right with this global reset, depending on the cost.
But I will have
Budgets or costs and what we don't get.
I, I'm kind of with Paul. Even if you do the global reset, we still will have ordinances coming in from planning act zone.
So if the planning commission is continually doing new ordinances and new ordinances and ordinances for trying to write the new code.
So you're, you're saying that we're not going to write any
The ordinances that are already in the pipeline will continue. And if there's, sometimes where the state says, you must do this by this day, well, we have to do that. If we have an emergency situation, then we have to do that. But this constant nitpitt, 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 nitpitt is driving crazy.
But that's still going to go on.
Are you saying that you're making, this is, this is my own translation of it. We're making a comprehensive code. What they're doing is going in and all these things that we have to go in and Valerie's saying one ordinance affects another ordinance.
Yes.
They're going to work in and they're going to fix all of that. And so by the time we're done, we should have a pretty comprehensive set of ordinances. Based on what's already there, right?
They will certainly take any ordinances that are done in the meantime.
Yes.
They will certainly take it
Right, because they're good
But I don't want to see this constant ten to fifteen ordinances constantly, constantly. This is to stop that.
Right, this is, this is
I do. I see that as this.
I would ask how that stops, or go ahead. Oh, Mayor, your town manager has it.
Yeah.
Well, great conversation, and it's a good point, can, can be stopped or cannot. There is an option. Typically, it's a specific sub-subject, policy subject, not any policies subject, and that is a moratorium.
That, that's my problem, really. That could help you, could, could help catch up with the pending ordinances, but
having said that, again, typically, there might be a moratorium on a certain type of zoning, like S T Rs, no more S T Rs, moratoriums have to be sorted out kind of thing, or you know, whatever. I've seen some towns that have actually had moratoriums on you know, apartment complexes, for example, because it was felt there were too many, but so moratorium in some form or fashion is an option to help catch up with the pending ordinances, so that you don't constantly have this.
In hand and hand with this.
Scramble.
Correct.
Yeah, well, in hand and hand with it, yes.
Because it's already going to do comprehensive, but we need to catch up with what we've already got in the pipeline.
Right.
That you said, that's what
That, that would still go on.
This is put in the pipeline, and those are still there.
We're limited to six months on the moratorium.
Well, we're, we're limited to six month on
Land use more.
Land use moratorium, yes. We, we've got a six month moratorium limit on that.
Well, that's, the moratorium is a different question than whether we should do this.
Right, and I'm just bringing that out as an option and not recommending it. It's just food for thought, it's not something
But we will have to make a decision on what kind of ordinances we would still want planning commission to be working on in the meantime, because I think it's going to affect what this company will be doing. It was totally going to affect what they're doing. They're going to have to take every order and say, well, we already worked on this, and now you're reading me this. And we already worked on this, and now you brought me this, and now they've got to go back and redo this. I think it's going to be a problem.
So why can't we give them a list of what's currently being worked on?
Oh, that's
These chapters are already in, in the line, and they said, hey, we've done work on those last.
Okay, okay, I'm changing my, I need to learn a little more about what we're doing, because I'm not sure unless, unless I understand, I don't know if I'm in favor of moratoriums until I understand the process better.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure
I can't explain the process to you. You're going to have to have the people that come and do this explain the process to you. I'm not an expert in this. The people that do this for a living are people that are the experts in how it's worked.
I, I have a general concept, but my concept could be wrong, as to what they're doing. So, and what you're saying leads me to believe there's something else there that I'm missing in the process.
So every ordinance that has had a public hearing, we have passed. They could take a look at that and
Oh, well, I figure we're going to finish those up. We'll finish those up.
We'll finish.
They're, they're in the pipeline, we'll finish.
So then what's planning and zoning going to do?
There's, there's probably plenty of other stuff that they could be working on. We still have to finish up the general plan. We, there's, there's stuff, there, there's things for them to do.
You would almost have to put a moratorium on new ordinances then.
They, one of the things that they told us is that we have to, they want us to, we would need to identify, so I, we were just talking to Sunrise, they were like, this when they, when this came up with this meeting with them, and they said, you're, as identified steering committee, you'll tell us your big five pain points that they know what they really have to focus on. And there would be like five pain points with regard to land use, five pain points with regard to the rest of the code, it has nothing to do with that. And so they know the big focus that they're going to be focusing on. And so in the meantime, there could potentially be some ordinances being written, but the part of this is, in my mind, is this is a lot easier process than to constantly have ordinance after ordinance after ordinance after ordinance after ordinance. Then, you know, nitpicking here, nitpicking there, doing this, doing that. It just, it's, it's a constant. I feel like it's messing the code up with this.
I looked it up to put it in a better rationale, correct. And it says that what it does is the municipal revision of the municipal code is ensuring that current, that is correct and forcible, and reflects the latest legislation and best practices. And it aligns the code with the standards that our community has set based on what's there. And then it aligns it with Utah State Code as well as any other code we're billing code or whatever we're set for.
That new house.
So it'll take everything and make it, it, it's, it is what I think it was, it's a, it's a legal review. And then they put in what we want, and we can accept it or reject it. It doesn't have, we don't have to accept everything they're doing. But with the reason Jean is saying that the pending ordinances is because she doesn't want them to have to be going back, because every time you change it, it changes the cost. And it makes it more and more expensive.
Yeah.
So all it is, is it is, it's just taking our ordinances and compiling them into a comprehensive comprehensive, not just being our general comprehensive with the state as well. And making sure that our county state And making sure that our state, county, and every code. And then the, what, what we noticed one time back when I was working in there is that a lot of our codes don't reference each other properly. And it's still that way, if you go in, you can notice that one code will say something else, and you're like, no, 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 it said that over here.
That's what I'm, that's what you were talking about.
So that's what this revision is, it's a, they're gonna go over everything. And it is something that Mutico does, it's something that, there's another place that does it. And they just remove everything they currently have and make sure that it makes sense. What's the word?
Um, and I'm, not, what's the word?
Cohesive, but not cohesive. It's where they all make sense, like synergy, everything goes together.
And, and there's no reference.
You can say, reference chapter eighty point one two or whatever, and then when you go to eighty point two from sixteen, they all.
They're, they're.
Saying that this.
And am I correct in my understanding that most municipalities do not have planning and zoning writing ordinances?
Yes.
Am I correct in that?
You're correcting my experience.
Okay, so.
Well, we're, but that's because they have a planner on staff.
And when you talk about what.
True, yeah, yeah, sure. So, so, I, I mean, yeah, you're right, but, but in small towns, they don't have planners, so it's.
Right.
It's like, we, they have.
There's a reason.
Yeah, there's a reason.
But we'll explore planner also, so we've got, we've got things to explore.
So, you know, because I think a lot of what planning and zoning has done, some of the ordinance are pretty important to the town in terms of, I mean, we're talking about being able to have to.
Chief is more. Right, but what I'm saying is, we're going to say over to these people, we want an ordinance to set this with, as you're revising the code in chapter twenty. We would like to have a section that does blah blah blah.
Commercial and affiliate commercial or whatever, sets up four different commercial areas type of thing.
We tell them what we're looking for, and you don't have to accept it once they.
That's, that creates a different issue, because what you, what you, they're saying, we wanna see this in here.
Yes.
Now, if it's relating to land use, that can only be done with the recommendation from the planning board after a public hearing. So we can't have them do that.
But, but the thing is, when their code is done, it goes to the planning commission for a public hearing. It goes through our process. And it goes to the public, the planning commission, the planning commission will have a public hearing. And as they said, we'll have your code, as, as they said, um, here's the code, you'll have the code that we've written. You're gonna have the code that planning commission has reviewed and marked up. And then it's gonna go to town council, and town council will decide what you want to.
We can't just accept, you know, like you're saying, no, we can't.
We're not just to accept it.
Yeah, we can't just accept something and say, yep, that's it, without having public.
Well, public, without having public.
Here, here, you had it.
By the, by the commission, you had it.
And it's gonna be a process, it's not gonna be something that's gonna happen overnight.
It's gonna take, and they said it took, uh, almost a year.
The first part of the codification is to make your ordinances talk, make sense with each other.
That makes sense.
I think.
Now, that's, that's, that one makes sense, sure, that one makes sense.
What Jean's talking about.
If we, if that's.
Okay.
Cause we make it make sense, then we start off with, oh my gosh, here's ten more ordinances, ten more ordinances, and we're going in, we, we, we just screwed up what we just did.
And in fact, and I've seen, from my associate's, how'd you get this comprehensive set of ordinances? We're gonna ask communities, they have a tendency to tinker with it.
Yes.
The same thing that we're talking about, and we're gonna be going through that process again. And, and, I mean, that's just inherent in the nature of.
That's just the way it works. And hopefully if I'm.
So that goes back to, I don't think we're ever gonna get rid of the pending ordinance issue, because that's always gonna be there.
I want it to be there, I don't want it to go away. I just don't want to have.
Twenty of them.
I don't have twenty of them.
This is the.
So we're gonna try to get to the back.
Always places as well, and, uh, if we change our, our working ordinance, we mean our ordinance, we do not have a period at the end. You write this one that makes sense with.
I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know if that would be part of the.
I think that's what, I think that's what it would be worth, is that they're your right ordinances. And it's not that, right, it's, it's a, first, it's a comprehensive codification, where they're gonna take everything and make it make sense. I know that, so for the rest.
I would have to find out from the people, I'm going to ask the different people and get bids.
So that's right, right.
The, the, what, the concern I have was the part about the future writing, telling them what we want and having them write it. That's a little different than taking what we already have and compiling it and making sure everything's existed, and then bringing it back to us and maybe having the docs and language changes to make it all exist. But for us telling them we want this, this, and this, and having them write it, and that's my concern on that.
Okay.
And, and that's what, I, maybe I'm hearing something else, maybe I don't understand the thought.
You're two parts, and you're ready.
Yeah.
Is there?
Well, at some point, it would be great to hear from whoever.
Exactly, whoever explains. Cause when I looked at the codification, when we're gonna do it, the reason we turned it down was the cost. I think it's something to what Jean's talking about, with the mayor is talking about right now. We were supposed to do the same thing, but the second part that you're hearing from her, I, I don't know about that part. We all need to help, it's our shit.
All right?
Okay.
I did my best to speak.
My little girl will be so happy.
I'm the town manager. The reason is.
Can I do a kind of, I'm waiting for it, I have a plan, it's been in the meeting, but.
Okay, I was gonna say, you don't always have to raise your hand.
That's right.
Trying to sit back.
Pretty cat.
There.
Tell them what I just said, be sorry.
No, I just, I just wanted to pass along a report that I got, say, from the public works department. I'd be interested, the speed limit signs have gone up for desert gardens at, uh, on Ernest Way. And then a couple of signs into Rio, one, I can name it Del Rio, near the mayor, and then another one.
It's a speed limit sign?
Twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
How many times have you, find that, that scene?
It went up today, that's why, yeah, but check it out, we're, we're, there's one on, there's one on Entrada.
Okay.
And so I just wanted the council to know that.
All right.
Stat's working on, it's a request.
I'm looking to remind how many times you drove by today, they didn't really.
Oh, and we put delineators on the speeding and parking, uh, not to, that's something again, but put delineators at the speed bumps, which was something that.
You mean, so it's, it's.
We're two of delineators at, at pavement.
A little bit.
To bring more attention to them.
Okay.
Which is something that we found out we should have had previously, but now we haven't. So that's my report.
Okay, fine.
I did go on the South Street, and they're also helping on one hundred over there.
The speed sign?
Yeah, this, that side that, if there was one, and it was by my house, which is the end of the road. One at the top has no windows, okay?
And we'll probably have more stuff for you to report by Tuesday night, sweetie, because, because it's always on something. So, okay.
Okay.
So it's awesome, okay? Motion to adjourn. Myself, all in favor of my, I, I.
And you said, then like, you're wait, I'm waiting for somebody to say, motion to adjourn.